This is a regular. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on June nine, two thousand twenty five. Carrie, can you read the statement, the opening statement?
Pursuant to section thirteen of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February two thousand twenty four through January two thousand twenty five. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January eighth, two thousand and twenty four. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January twelfth, two thousand twenty four edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting has also been posted to the municipal website, Notice that all regular and special meetings of this regular of the Princeton Regional Plan, Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and the Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on Tuesday, January seventeen, two thousand twenty three. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Questions may be asked after an applicant's witnesses have testified. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by the Planning Board members and staff. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the reactions or raise hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen or participating by phone by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. We will have a countdown clock to help speakers keep track of time. Please note that the speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted.
Thank you, Carrie. Please take the roll.
Mr. Bodikheimer, Ms. Capizoli, Mayor Frida,
Here.
Mr. McGowan,
Here.
Ms. Nuka,
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell, Ms. Pearl Mutter,
Here.
Mr. Taylor,
Here.
Ms. Wilson Anderson. Ms. Wilson Anderson.
Claudia was here just a couple of minutes ago. She might have gotten cut off or something.
Okay, and Mrs. Wilson.
Here.
We have quorum.
Okay, the first order of business, and I'm going to be conducting the hearing until we select a chair, which soon will happen shortly. But the first step will be to swear in the members of the board that need to be sworn in, that are new members or it's a new time period for them, a new appointment. Are there any members of the board, Carrie, that they're continuing, they don't need to be sworn in?
The only, yes, present this evening, Mr. Taylor is the only one, and Ms. Pearl Mutter.
Okay, good. So they do not have to be sworn in. For everybody else, have any of you been sworn in outside this meeting, maybe at the clerk's office or?
Well, I thought I was sworn in until my term on the Environmental Commission ends, which is another year, but I'm perfectly happy to be sworn in again if I need to be.
Yeah, I don't know if that's the case with respect to the Environmental Commission, but I just don't know. But why don't we swear in again?
Yeah, that's fine. No problem.
Okay. What we're going to do then, everybody has to be sworn in. And you've all now gotten a printed out copy of the oath of office, you know, big, big letters. I think we'll start with the mayor. And Mark, if you could raise your right hand, if you could read that. And when you get to Princeton Planning Board toward the very end, I will, that would be class one member.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, I, Mark Frida, sincerely profess and swear that I do and will bear true allegiance, faith and allegiance to the government established in this state under the authority of the people. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will faithfully, sorry, I got to scroll down, that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the Office of Princeton Planning Board. I'm sorry, would say one A?
A class, class one member.
Class one, sorry, class one member, according to the best of my ability and understanding.
So sworn in, congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Then next, why don't we, Louise, you have to be sworn in also.
I do, yep.
Okay, why don't we do you next? If you could raise your right hand? And if you could read that, and again, it's good, as you know, to be a class four member.
Right. I, Louise Wilson, sincerely profess and swear that I do and will bear true faith and allegiance to the government established in this state under the authority of the people. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the Office of class four member of Princeton Planning Board, according to the best of my ability and understanding.
So sworn in, congratulations, if congratulations are in order. Next, who would be next? I guess we could do Alvin.
Okay.
If you could raise your right hand, and again, as you know, you're a class four member.
I sincerely profess and swear that I do and will bear true faith and allegiance to the government established in this state under the authority of the people. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the class four member of the Princeton Planning Board, according to the best of my ability and understanding.
So sworn in, congratulations.
And Jerry, I think the only other member that needs it is Claudia Wilson Anderson, who is having some issues with her computer, but it looks like she just got back in at the perfect time.
So Freddie still has a year left on her term?
Yes, till twenty twenty six, end of twenty twenty six.
Okay.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Good. Is Claudia here?
She is here.
And have you gotten a copy of the oath of office?
Yes, I do.
Okay, if you could read it, and when you get to Princeton Planning Board, raise your right hand and read it. And when you get to Princeton Planning Board toward the very end, that would be Princeton Planning Board class four member. If you could raise.
All right.
If you could raise your right hand, yeah, go ahead.
I, Claudia Wilson Anderson, sincerely profess and swear that I do and will bear the true faith and allegiance to the government established in this state under the authority of the people. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the Office of Princeton Planning Board, class four.
Yes.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
So sworn in, congratulations.
Thank you.
The next, the next step will be reorganization of the board, and if I could hear any nominations for the chair.
As I guess the chairman of the committee, I would, on behalf of the committee, I would nominate Louise Wilson as chair and Owen O'Donnell as vice chair.
Okay, and I think we could do both at the same time. Do I hear any seconds for that?
I second the motion.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay, if we could have a vote, Carrie, if you could take the vote.
Certainly. Mayor Frida?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Ms. Nuka?
Aye.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson Anderson? I think, Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Congratulations, and I'm figuratively handing the gavel over to you.
Thank you. I really, I appreciate this very much. I enjoy this work, and I'm grateful for the confidence that the board has in me, and I know that Owen feels the same way. He can't be with us tonight because of a very sad death in his family, and, but he'll be back at the next meeting, I believe, and it'll be good to see him. So, and also welcome to all of the returning members and our new member, Mr. Frida, Mayor Frida. So, next up, we have several appointments to make. As further business in reorganization, they include first the appointment of the Planning Board Attorney. We have a resolution that was included as a link in one of the, excuse me, I'm finding it on a different tab. One of the notices that Carrie sent out about this meeting, so the resolution states that we would reappoint Mueller and Bailey PC, is that, yes, PC. And also states the rates, hourly rates that we pay, and so I will ask if there is a motion to approve that resolution.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jack. Call the roll, please, Carrie.
Mayor Frida?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Ms. Nuka?
Aye.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And thank you for your confidence.
Thank you, Jerry. Next up, we have appointment of special counsel. This is our attorney that steps in when Jerry and his firm have a conflict. The resolution shows Marazidi Falcon as special counsel. Joe Marazidi is our, has been our redevelopment attorney, and we think it makes sense to to appoint that firm to this role as well. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Thanks, Freddie, and a second?
Second.
I heard Alvin, and I saw Claudia. Alvin, since you spoke the words, I will go with your second. Call the roll, please, Carrie.
Mayor Frida?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Ms. Nuka?
Aye.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
The next appointment is redevelopment council. The resolution is to reappoint Marazidi Falcon as redevelopment council, with Joe Marazidi being our attorney in these matters. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Thank you, Freddie. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jack. Call the roll, please, Carrie.
Mayor Frida?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Ms. Nuka?
Aye.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next up, we have appointment of Planning Board Secretary, Ms. Carrie Phillip. Do I see a motion?
May I nominate Carrie Phillip, please?
Oh, people just jumped in to do that. Moved by Jack Taylor, seconded by Paula Venuka. Call the roll, please, Carrie.
Thank you. Ms. Mayor Frida?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Ms. Nuka?
Aye.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carried.
So item six here is resolutions for special meetings and for our two thousand twenty five calendar, so I think we should, I guess, take those separately. The special meeting resolution just describes the notice that's required and authorizes the secretary to to make those notices when the board calls a special meeting. So it's a very pro forma bit of business, but would someone like to move the special meetings resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Alvin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Paula V. Call the roll, please, Carrie.
Mayor Frida?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Ms. Nuka?
Aye.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And lastly, we have, excuse me, our two thousand twenty five calendar, meaning February two thousand twenty five, next month through January of two thousand twenty six. Hope everybody's had a chance to look at that. If you've got conflicts and need to miss meetings, of course, that's happens now and then, just let Carrie know as soon as possible. Would somebody like to move the meetings' calendar?
So moved.
Thank you, Jack. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Claudia. Call the roll, please, Carrie.
Mayor Frida?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Ms. Nuka?
Aye.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson? Motion carried.
Thank you. Announcements, are there any, any announcements tonight from staff or from board members? Okay, I don't think we have any subcommittee reports. Is that correct? Good. Then moving on to resolutions and findings of fact, we have first up the Institute for Advanced Study. This was a preliminary and final site plan with variances. At number one, Einstein Lane slash Olden Lane, this is file number P two four two four dash four six seven P. I just want to quickly say, and this is really for the benefit of Mayor Frida, if you were not at a meeting or aren't qualified to vote, for whatever reason, Carrie already knows that. So we generally don't ask that people abstain. It's just, I don't know, the way we've done business. So, I mean, I think I have that right. Is that right, Carrie?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, all right.
I mean, they're not in a position to abstain because they can't participate.
Right, okay, but even when, if somebody has recused or otherwise, or wasn't there, yeah, there's no need to abstain. Okay. So we have this resolution for the institute. I read it out in the, including the file number. Are there any questions or suggestions related to this resolution, and if not, would someone like to move it?
I'll move it.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Nuka? Carrie, call the roll, please.
Thank you. Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Nuka?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Our next resolution is for the trustees of Princeton University. This was a minor site plan with variance. Eisenhardt Arch relocation at College Road and Springdale Road. This is block one one three zero one, lot eleven, and it's file number P two four two four dash five two nine PM. Any questions, suggestions, comments on this? And if not, would someone like to move it?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Anderson. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up, we have a discussion of the master plan appendix, a stormwater management mitigation plan. If the item on the agenda looks familiar, it's because we already did this. But we need to do it again, so I'm gonna turn things over quickly to Justin to just, just explain, you know, why we're back, and, and then Mr. Purcell will walk us through this hearing again.
Certainly, thank you, Madam Chair.
Or maybe it's a.
It's a hearing.
It is a hearing, okay.
Carrie, would you like to swear in?
Yeah, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn or affirmed?
And thank you, Madam Chair.
Before we start, the proof of publication and service are in order in the board's jurisdiction.
Yep, welcome back. Thank you all for being back. And good evening to members of the public in attendance as well. So like the chair said, the board reviewed essentially the same document on October seventeenth of last year. We've since only done some formatting changes, but the reason that you're hearing it again is because my office, we failed to notice after the meeting. We were supposed to send a letter to the county planning board within thirty days, and maybe about forty days after, we realized that we just missed that. So that is why we're here today with this next hearing. I apologize for, you know, using your time again for the same thing, and I especially apologize to Mr. Jim Purcell, who's here giving this presentation a second time. But this will be a hearing like it was last time, because this is, would be adopted into the master plan as an appendix.
Thank you, Justin. Stuff happens. Don't worry about it.
Yep.
Welcome, Mr. Purcell.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and and planning board members and new members. Happy New Year, and Jerry, swear me in.
If you could, you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn.
This time, I actually have a short PowerPoint presentation, so it's much clearer. And if I, I think I have the authority to share my screen, I do. So I will share my screen and explain to you what the stormwater management mitigation plan is all about. First of all, as we know, the NJDEP established stormwater management rules for control of water quantity, quality, and groundwater recharge. Subsequent to that, Princeton adopted stormwater management regulations to comply with those stormwater management rules from the NJDEP. And in fact, Princeton has gone above and beyond the requirements of the State of New Jersey and made it more stringent in Princeton to comply with water quantity, quality, and groundwater recharge. A mitigation plan is required to allow the planning board to grant variances, and I apologize for the word variances, but that is what NJDEP uses in their rules. As we know, in land use, variances are typically related to zoning regulations. So we interchangeably use the words variances, waivers, and exemptions as we go through this stormwater mitigation plan. The mitigation plan is required to provide guidance to applicants for mitigation project selection and also guidance to the planning board on how to authorize these waivers and exemptions. It does not supersede the requirements for meeting water quantity, water quality, or groundwater recharge to the greatest extent practicable. So the big point there is that it does not mitigate the need to demonstrate compliance to that greatest need. So every applicant in front of the planning board has to come in and say, we've done everything practicable to meet the requirements of the stormwater ordinance. We're requesting a waiver of this because it just can't be done. It requires demonstration that full compliance cannot be reasonably accommodated on the site. And reasonably accommodated means that they haven't, they have to go to the extent of reducing the size of the development, increasing the size of their stormwater management. They have to demonstrate that they've gone to the fullest extent possible to meet the regulations. Size, scale, layout. They, they can't just show up with a plant with an application and say, sorry, it doesn't work at this layout with this number of units. They have to actually look at, how do we, how do we adjust it? A waiver cannot be granted if the project would result in a localized adverse impact or create a compliance deficit that cannot be compensated by offsite mitigation. It does allow flexible implementation of our stormwater management regulations. And it does not yet identify specific mitigation projects, but it provides guidance to select appropriate ones. When we talk about the things like localized adverse impact, an applicant has to come to the planning board with an assessment of what the impact is of getting that waiver. So if they cannot control, say, the water quantity, what is the impact to the sensitive receptors downstream of that development? So they have to do an analysis and demonstrate to the planning board that there is no adverse impact to downstream properties. Any mitigation that is done has to be within the same drainage area. We have several drainage areas in Princeton, six to be exact. And so they can't come to us and say, we're gonna do, first of all, can't do one in Lawrenceville. It's gotta be within Princeton, but it also would have to be in the Stony Brook Watershed or the Harrys Brook Watershed. It has to be as close as practicable upstream of the development. Those are the NJDEP rules. They have the responsibility to obtain the legal authorization to do the mitigation project if it's on private or municipal property. They have to get authorization from the property owner if they're going to do a mitigation project that's not on their property. They have to then identify the sensitive receptors subject to the mitigation project. So if they're going to do some stormwater management in, on another property, they have to identify who, what are the sensitive receptors to that property and demonstrate that there's no adverse impact on those sensitive receptors. And then the mitigation plan also establishes the administrative process to go through this. And that really is the extent of the mitigation plan, and I believe you have it in your packet. So I don't think I need to bring up the entire plan in front of you to go through anything. I'm happy to answer any questions and give you any clarifications you need.
Thank you, Jim, very much. Are there questions from board members before we invite public comment?
I'm trying to come up here. I can't get the, the, oh, here we go.
You're good, Freddie.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I have some minor, they're not corrections, they're just kind of suggestions. But, I mean, environmental people tend to talk in code, and I went through this, and most of it is defined, but category one waters, TSS, which I assume is total suspended solids, TMZL, which I assume are total maximum daily loads. They just mentioned the initials. And if it's not too late, I think it would be helpful to at least say what they are, so that people who are not as familiar with this knows, either give the, where it comes from or say what it is. And similarly, where it mentions the pool, I assume that's, those are projects that will be in it, they're not calling it a bank, but it sounds like a bank of some, like it's gonna be set up locally. It probably comes from the state regulations or something, but I think it would be helpful to say what the pool is. And then one other place, this is actually just a correction, on page seven permits, it says obtain any, something which must be obtained, so obtain's in there twice. So you might want to just take out obtain, if it's not too late, take out obtain the first obtained, and it's just clear.
What page is that on, Freddie?
Seven, and it's the, the second bullet from the bottom. It says obtain any and all necessary, blah, 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 which must be obtained, so it's, it's, it's duplicative.
Justin, that is one of those minor editorial, uh, changes that I made when I sent you the final copy that did not get into the packet. It was a couple of days too late. I would agree, Justin, if it's not a problem that, uh, may, either we add definitions or we put in parentheses after TMDL and. TSS and anything else, it's an initialism that we should probably define it. And that seems to be, to be editorial.
Uh, I'd just defer to Jerry on that one. Uh, do we need to call those out specifically to do it on the record right here, or would we need to carry this, uh, to do so?
I don't think we need to carry it. Um, I, I think it's fine, just the handling it the way it's been, being handled will make that change.
Spell out the acronyms and.
Yeah, exactly.
Two things, yeah. Yep. Thanks, Freddie.
I can edit that on Monday, um, Justin, when I get back.
Okay, great.
Uh, Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, just a quick administrative question for you, Jim. Given the importance of stormwater management overall and the relationship of stormwater management and the master plan. Is there anything that we can still, as a planning board, expect in addition to the mitigation plan under the master plan?
Expect or require?
Require.
I, I, I think that's a legal question, and the answer is no, you can't require anything more, but this planning board. I will say over in the last four years that I've been in Princeton, has been very successful. In getting developers to go above and beyond the regulations to do more. And, and I think that, um, you know, mo- almost every developer in this town recognizes the importance of stormwater management. And, and does what they can do, um, and more.
Yeah.
Um, but I don't, Jerry, I don't think we have any way of requiring it.
No, it, it, I mean, the case law makes it clear that, that planning boards and reviewing applications, you know, have. It, it have chewing powers and, and they could e- engage with a- applicants about that. So you, you have that, and then if there are variances, you know, the typical land use variances, that gives extra power to, uh, to planning boards, but, but that's basically it.
Well, we can and do, I don't think I'm contradicting you here, Jim, at all, but we, cause you mentioned to this at the outset. Princeton can and does have a hi- higher standard than DEP sets. For stormwater management in general, under the stormwater management rules and DEP permits towns to. Raise the bar. Um, for, for our stormwater ordinance, which we have done. And that, that's not inconsistent with what you just described, right? With, with regard specifically to stormwater mitigation planning and the granting of. Um, waivers or exemptions, right, right? Okay, any other, any other questions from? From board members? I, I do wanna, well, even before we hear from the public, thank you, Jim, and, and the folks in your, on your team. And the members of the Princeton Flood and Stormwater Commission that have really. You know, put a lot of thought and work into this, and it's a, that's a really great, um, committee of the town and, uh. Uh, not because I sit on it. Uh, but, uh, there are, you know, people who bring a ton of, of, um, expertise and also, you know, passion to that work, so.
We, we have some very expert people on the Flood and Stormwater Commission that. E- essentially wrote this. Um, so this is great.
Okay, so, um, seeing no other comments from board members, I will, um, open up. The meeting to public comment, a public comment, any members of the public who would like to address the board. Um, about this particular item, the, um, stormwater management mitigation plan, please. Raise your hand virtually and Carrie Phillip will bring you over. She's doing that already for. Susan Bristol from the Watershed Institute. Um, Susan, I'm, I, I know you know the drill, you get sworn in by Mr. Muller and then, uh. Uh, let her rip.
Susan, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yeah.
So it's sworn or affirmed. Please state your full name and spell your last name.
Yeah, Susan Bristol, B R I S T O L. And I am the municipal policy specialist at the Watershed Institute. And I just wanted to jump in and say, Happy New Year, congratulations to the new members, but especially on this matter that you're discussing. Um, how, to say how much the watershed appreciates partnering with all the various talents and committees and boards in Princeton. And to, um, praise the elements of this that are above and beyond, as described earlier. And, uh, what we would call an, an enhanced. Uh, enhanced, you know, element in your, in your master plan, and I would just continue to encourage you to consider. Uh, strengthening your master plan every time you update an element with, with watershed content. And, um, we've had some interesting discussions with other towns about. Actually including an optional watershed element in their master plans. For towns that might not have those things covered elsewhere. So, uh, have a great year, keep up the good work, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Bristol. Good to see you.
Yep.
Um, any other members of the public wish to address the board on this topic? Not seeing any hands go up, so I will close the public comment. On this hearing and, um. I guess, uh, Mr. Muller, I turned to the board to. Invite further discussion. If there is none, someone might want to move. Uh, readoption of the, of this appendix to the master plan. Is that correct?
Exactly.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Nuka. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan. Um, call the roll, please, Carrie.
Before we do that, can we, uh, we will make changes in accordance with what we discussed before.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, and thank you again for those.
Mayor Frida?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Nuka?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, uh, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Stay warm down there. Uh, next up, we have, uh, an application from RB Homes Builders LLC. This is a minor site plan with variance. Uh, at fourteen North Harrison Street, block thirty-four point zero one, lot thirteen. This is file number P twenty-four, twenty-four dash five-two-one P M.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, if I could. So on this item, there was a question raised as to whether I had a conflict of interest. And initial legal review said I don't, but to be. Very prudent and to absolutely not do anything to injure this applicant, I am gonna recuse myself. And there'll be further research into whether there actually is a conflict for future, uh, future items, so. Glad to have joined everybody. Sorry that I'm cutting out and, uh, thank you.
Um, that's perfectly fine, and thank you. Mr. Muller, um, can you speak to notification and jurisdiction?
Yes, proof of publication and service, publication and service are in order and the board has jurisdiction.
Great. Um, Ian Henderson, uh, on behalf of the planning office is going to get the ball rolling here. Uh, and introduce this, and then we'll turn to the applicant.
Ian, if you could raise your right hand.
Sure.
Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn or affirmed.
All right, thank you.
Did we, I'm sorry to interrupt Ian, right out, right out of the box.
No, that's fine.
Um, but Jerry, should we also swear in Derek and Dan?
Yeah.
Uh, at the same time?
Yeah, and is Justin gonna be here also?
Justin is here, just in case, I guess. Yeah, sure.
As well, okay, so the three, you can raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give, or may give, will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn or affirmed.
Go ahead, Ian. Sorry about that.
No, no problem. Good evening, everybody. Uh, Happy New Year, and, uh, we'll kick, uh, kick this year off. We have, uh. Fourteen North Harrison Street, so tonight we have applicant RB Homes LLC. Seeking minor site plan approval and variance relief from the planning board, uh, for its proposed second floor office conversion to apartments. Um, we actually met, uh, the site planning committee on November thirteenth of last year. Uh, where the application was deemed minor site development. Um, but due to its bulk variances, that's why it's, it's brought before the larger board tonight. Um, generally speaking, there's a second floor, uh, change of use from office space to four market rate units. Um, I'll leave it to the applicant to go into more of those specifics. I'm sorry, I'm just gonna share my screen.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
And can, uh, meanwhile, Carrie, can you check the attendees room and make sure that any other? Uh, folks who are here on behalf of the applicant are moved into the participant area?
Thank you. I see Chris Tar. I was just asking about him.
That's what I was wondering about, yeah. Thank you. Go ahead, um, Ian.
Gotcha, so, um, what you should see before you.
I'm not seeing your screen, though, or is anybody, I don't think the shared screen, there we go.
Okay, let's see. Are you seeing the, um, the map in front of you?
The overhead, yes.
Okay, perfect. Uh, yeah, so, um, this is the, uh, publicly available Rowan University. Um, publicly accessible, the New Jersey Map Parcel Explorer. Um, so Jerry, I guess we can label this PB one.
Exactly.
Excellent. Um, so we're looking at, if you see the blue outline around the Merrill Lynch building, um. Please disregard the, the lines on top, that was some residual from the program itself. Um, so we're looking at the, the Merrill Lynch parcel as well, so block thr- thirty-four point oh one, lot thirteen. Um, it's located within the former, uh, borough's residential office, RO zone, where residential uses are permitted. Um, the parcel does fall within the HO two overlay. Um, I'd just like to know that the, that option is not being utilized by the applicant for this application. Um, but just to know that it, it does fall in that region. Um, the two point four, excuse me, the point two four acre site. Uh, does border historic Jug Town, so just below. Uh, though according to the New Jersey Historic Preservation Office, the Lucy two point O website. Uh, the parcel itself is not located in a locally designated historic district or listed as a state or nationally designated site. In relation to our master plan, uh, we do have a land use goal to focus higher residential density within and around downtown. Um, the RO zone is actually specifically listed in the land use recommendations of the plan. Um, and is one of the downtown zones that's slated to be, quote, amended to promote the development of new residential dwellings within Princeton's downtown. Um, generally speaking, the plan does encourage, uh, the removal of barriers to increase density overall. Um, and one of the mobility aims of the, uh, within the plan is to reduce inbound commuting through the development of additional housing. And, um, some transportation highlights of the unit itself, we could see directly across the street. You have the North Harrison, um, Nassau bus stop, that's a, uh, NJ Transit Route six oh six. So that provides access, um, connections to regional rail, Hamilton Station, um, regional shopping. Uh, just a little bit higher up, you have, uh, a little to, to the north, you have North Harrison Street, it's Bruce Circle, so that's the, uh, Muni Bus, uh, current. Route stops there. Um, and again, close enough and, and for the pedestrian connection, so we have sidewalks. Crosswalks, connections to the, uh, downtown shopping. Uh, diving deeper into the application itself, um, we, we're looking at the Merrill Lynch building, who had, um, approval for office building use in two thousand and ten. Um, upon lease renewal, they opted to rent only the third floor and keep that for office space. So now, um, the second is slated for, uh, change. Uh, I should note that there, there's no proposed exterior site improvements to the building. Um, and just one request to the applicant, uh, the environmental information statement. Uh, lists the first floor as residential as well. I know that's, that's not within the application before us, um, but I just wanna clarify. Uh, that that wasn't meant to say office. Uh, as far as parking on site, there is one parking stall that's proposed to be removed. Uh, but the applicant will go through the additional bicycle parking that's, that's going to be added. Um, as far as the two variances, uh, we have a variance for usable open space. One thousand two hundred fifteen square feet, uh, is proposed where fourteen hundred square feet is required. And, um, there's an additional variance for a minimum year, uh, rear yard setback. For nineteen and a half feet from the required, uh, twenty-five feet. Um, at that, at this point, I'll, uh. I'll leave it if there, should there be any remaining questions or concerns, I'll save some of my additional staff comments, uh, if they're not addressed. Uh, but at this point, I'll, I'll hand it back for the applicant to present. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, anything, uh, that, uh, Dan Weisman or Derek wanna add? Um, before we hear from, um, yep, Derek?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, there is just one other minor variance. Uh, there's a requirement that the open space be enclosed. Um, it's not enclosed, so that is, is a third variance in, uh. The four units they're proposing, uh, do not reach, uh, affordable housing set aside. And, uh, just thinking of the future, if one of the other floors is ever converted to residential use. A fifth unit would trigger a twenty percent set aside, so we ask that the applicant enter into an agreement, um, to be reviewed by the municipal attorney to. Make that unit affordable. Uh, if, if more units are added above, uh, that triggers the twenty percent set aside. Um, I think that Dan had a comment that the fire, uh, subcode official would, uh. Require a booster pump for the fire protection system and, uh. I think that's it, Dan, if you have any, uh, any other comments?
Uh, no, that was, uh, that covers it, nothing further.
I, I don't have that memo right in front of you, but I thought my reading of it, and maybe this is wrong, so. Please, if so, please tell me that the booster pump might be necessary. Do we know now from the.
It may be required.
Fire official that he thinks that it is?
It may be required.
Maybe, okay, okay. So it's more of a heads up than a.
Correct.
Requirement, okay. Great. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Tar?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this is a delightful adaptive reuse, and, uh, we have two witnesses, Daniel Barsky representing the owner. And Susan Favate, uh, is our planner. And we could, might save time if we had them both sworn now?
Yep. If you both can raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give will be the truth?
Do.
Do.
So sworn or affirmed. Please state your full name and spell your last name.
Uh, Daniel Barsky, B A R S K Y.
Susan Favati, F A V A T E.
Thank you.
So Daniel's gonna start off, he has a slide presentation, if we could have it marked as, uh, exhibit A one, we'll just, uh, turn the, turn it over to Daniel.
Right, and Chris, can you arrange for me to get a hard copy of that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, let me just share my screen here. Everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, good, good. Uh, good evening. My name is Daniel Barsky and, uh, I'll be presenting the following presentation. Regarding, uh, the application for fourteen North Harrison Street. Uh, so the property on fourteen North Harrison is located, uh, in Harrison Street. It's close to the corner of Nassau Street, where there is an existing three-story brick office building. Uh, which the original site plan for that was approved in two thousand and ten. Since that time, it's been occupied by Merrill Lynch till two thousand and twenty-three. And here is a Google Earth image of the property and the existing building, which is outlined in red. It's located in the RO zone in an area that has, um. A, a mix of commercial and residential uses within that area.
Dan- Daniel, are these, um, slides numbered?
They are. This is slide two.
Good, as you go through them, just.
Sure.
Let me just go, thank you.
So, um, here on, actually, this is slide four, the last slide was slide three, this is slide four. Here is a picture of the front of the existing building on fourteen North Harrison Street. As I said, Merrill Lynch has been occupying it till a couple of years ago, since it was first built. The driveway entrance is to the northern or right side of the building. And on Slide five, as we continue along, looking down the driveway, is the right side elevation of the building. And you can see here in this picture, the covered parking, which covers a portion of the rear of the building. And as you continue along the rear, I took a picture here along the back. You can see some additional parking spaces. And finally, on Slide seven, the southern portion or left side of the building, which runs parallel to Nassau Street. So during COVID, many corporate offices reduced or eliminated office space. And this building and Merrill Lynch were no exception. So in the beginning of two thousand and twenty-three, Merrill Lynch reduced their office space from the second and third floors to just the third floor. And at that time, we hired a reputable, a reputable and local commercial broker, Peter Dodds, from Warford and Dodds, to re-list the property as an office rental. And I'm sure, as everyone knows, that the effects from COVID on the commercial real estate market were significant. And the demand for office space has been drastically impacted. Over the two years, over two years have gone by when we've been trying to rent this as office space. And unfortunately, we have not been able to rent it. So I'll start by just showing you the existing and proposed floor plan. So here are the floor plans for the existing first floor. There was a question about the first floor and what the intended use is. Currently, it's a lobby and there are no changes proposed to the existing first floor. And it will remain a lobby with access to the elevator. Slide ten, show the proposed floor plans for the conversion of the second floor, which includes four apartments with three two bedrooms, each having one bathroom apartments and one studio. These units are to share a common corridor and their own means of ingress and egress through a dedicated stairwell. And here is the existing floor plan for the third floor office space that Merrill Lynch currently occupies. And no changes are proposed to the third floor. As mentioned earlier, the property on fourteen North Harrison is located in the RO Zone. And attached are the zoning bulk requirements for the property. As illustrated, the prop, the proposed site complies in all aspects, with exception to a couple non-conformities. One of them is for the rear yard setback, where twenty-five feet are required and nineteen and a half feet are proposed. Our other variance is for an open space requirement, where we are short only a hundred eighty-five square feet. Fourteen hundred square feet is required and one thousand two hundred fifteen square feet is proposed. On Slide thirteen is the proposed site plan. The existing footprint is outlined in blue. And there's actually no changes proposed to alter the existing structure. In fact, I'll go over on Slide fourteen, there's very few changes proposed to the existing site at all. Currently, as I mentioned on a previous slide, the building is nineteen and a half feet from the rear property line. Because of the change to a mixed use, the requirement is increased to twenty-five feet. So that building's actually not moving, but the change in use triggers that variance for that existing non-conformity. I guess it's important to say here that currently there's large immature pine trees buckling the rear property line. So we are requesting variance relief for this existing condition. We're also proposing removing one of the parking stalls, which you can see in the top left of the screen, and replacing it with grass to combine it with the existing lawn area to create an open space. Even with removing this one parking stall, we'll still meet the parking requirements after this conversion to open space. And there's another open space proposed in the front of the building, also shaded in green, in the front right corner of the screen. And lastly, two bicycle spaces are proposed in the front of the walkway, right here, highlighted in red. The remaining covered bicycle storage will be located inside, which I'll show on one of the following slides. Before I go on to bicycle storage, just to finish over the open space, this is a picture of the existing condition where the open space is proposed in the right rear of the property. We're proposing to remove the one parking stall, relocate the curb, and remove the three small bushes to combine this area together to accommodate some of our open space requirement. One of the comments in the memo was about additional plantings. We're not proposing any additional plantings here to keep this area actually usable by the residents of the building. However, the area will not be enclosed, which is a variance condition that Derek mentioned. But we feel with the existing mature trees, the fence, and the existing surrounding structures, that there's enough of a buffer for a meaningful use of this area. And also, a little bit later in the presentation, our planner will be testifying to this particular property's location and vicinity to parks and other amenities that fulfill this need. The second open space area is in the front of the building, which is indicated here in the yellow circle. Once again, no additional landscaping is proposed, and we feel that the mature landscaping and existing structures provide some buffer where no official enclosure is provided. Going back to the bicycle storage, beyond the two bicycle spaces that were provided by the front walkway, there is a unutilized storage space that's accessible from the parking lot in the rear, which has its own doors to enter. And that's where we're proposing to store four bicycle, covered bicycle spaces. And you can see that area highlighted in red. So the office will enter through the main front door, which is circled in yellow. Merrill Lynch currently has a special key card protected to only allow them to enter through this entrance. And we're proposing to keep it that way and to have a separate keyed entry for the apartments, which have their own entrance, which you can see circled in red. So the office will have an entrance from the front door and into the lobby, which houses the elevator, highlighted in blue. The elevator can only access the third floor with the same key card that opens that main front door. There's also an additional emergency stairwell dedicated to the third floor, which is highlighted in yellow. The stairway is accessible from the exterior left side of the building, the one that runs parallel to Nassau Street, and is accessible from the parking lot. The apartments will have their own dedicated means of access through the stairwell, which is outlined in red. They're not able to actually access the third floor from the stairwell as it's locked with a key card. They can only access the corridor of the second floor from the stairwell. And they can also take the door from the stairwell into the lobby to access the elevator, which will take them up to the second floor, but will not allow them to go to the third floor without a key card. And finally, BFJ Planning conducted a traffic impact assessment and concluded that the proposed residential conversion will slightly reduce traffic generation in, of this site in all peak hour periods. So now I'll hand it over, hand over the presentation to our planner Susan to provide some more information.
Madam Chair, Susan has testified before this board in the past. I'll ask her if her license as a planner is still functional, in which case we'd ask that she be accepted as a planning expert.
I expect that'll be no problem. I would like to hear just a tad more than she's been here before.
Yeah, Madam Chair, it's been about a year.
Tell us a little bit, Ms. Favate. Am I pronouncing your name properly?
It's technically Favati, rhymes with karate.
Body, okay. A little bit about your education and experience.
Sure, thank you. I'm a principal of BFJ Planning, where I've been in professional planning practice for over eighteen years. I am a licensed New Jersey professional planner. That license is current. I'm also an ASA ICP certified, member of the National Planning Association. I have a master's degree in planning from New York University. And I currently serve as the Borough Planner in Red Bank and Madison. I've testified before numerous planning and zoning boards, including this one, just about a year ago, I think. And I've also appeared before your zoning board. I'm very familiar with Princeton as well. We are doing some current work on behalf of the Special Improvement District. So we actually know a lot about the business districts. And I serve on my own planning board up in Chatham Borough, where I've been for sixteen years on the planning board, including the last ten or so as Chair.
Great. Well, we accept your excellent qualifications. Thank you for going over them.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to, you know, reorient, refresh everyone's memory, you've seen a couple different areas of the site. We wanted to really contextualize this property within Princeton and show how it really is, you know, an excellent smart growth opportunity here, because it is a very walkable site to all of the local amenities, including parks, shopping, grocery store, and also the downtown core of Princeton. So what you see on this map, which is Slide twenty-one, the red circle shows a quarter mile radius from the site. That's generally about a five to six minute walk. So within that quarter mile radius, you have two public parks, Quarry Park just to the north, off of Harrison, and as well Harrison Street Park, further to the south, south of Nassau Street. So two parks within a five to six minute walk, as well as the grocery store, which is literally around the corner. So that really does provide, you know, some basic amenities. And then there are obviously some shopping and dining opportunities in this section of Nassau Street. But you can go just a little bit further and reach really the outskirts of downtown within that quarter mile radius. And certainly within a half mile radius, which is generally a ten to fifteen minute walk, you're really in the downtown core, Witherspoon Street and that portion of Nassau. So very, very walkable environment. It really is just an excellent example of, you know, an adaptive reuse and an infill residential project that will introduce new housing opportunities without changing the neighborhood, the existing neighborhood scale. At just four units, on one story of a three-story building, it's going to complement that low-density residential nature of this portion of Harrison Street, where you do see both single-family homes and townhouses and small apartments as well, all kind of co-mingling with, you know, with commercial uses as well. It's very much consistent with general best planning practices for smart growth. The future residents here will have the ability, as I mentioned, to easily access local businesses, parks, other amenities, all without having to drive. I talked about the parks and the businesses. There's also, as Ian mentioned earlier, there are two bus stops, one directly across the street and one just a little bit to the north. So that provides, you know, excellent regional transit access. So it's really textbook, I think, in my opinion, good planning principles. The flip side of that is that we do need some variances, which really are stemming from the fact that this is an adaptive reuse project. So it's not new construction. If it were a newly constructed project, it would probably be able to meet all of the area bulk requirements. But because the building exists, there are some things that get triggered. So the first, first set of two variances that are related, you've heard about, are the usable open space. So as you know, there is a requirement for fifteen hundred square feet of usable open space. We are short by about a hundred and eighty-five square feet. We're providing just under, just over twelve hundred square feet, one thousand two hundred and fifteen. So that is a variance request. And then the nature of the open space itself, the definition of usable open space means that it needs to be enclosed. Our open space is not proposed to be formally enclosed, as you just heard. We do feel that because of the small nature of the site and the presence of existing trees and buffering, it's not really necessary. And also, enclosing this space would actually be very difficult on a site of this size and making everything work. So we do feel that that's a reasonable variance request to ask for. And then the third variance relates to the rear yard setback. This building exists in a compliant state. It does meet all current bulk requirements, including setbacks. But the conversion to residential then triggers a new rear yard setback of twenty-five feet. The current setback is twenty feet, which the building meets, but it is short of that twenty-five foot setback, which is triggered by the change of use. So again, no change to the building itself. The condition exists. It will continue to exist. Our rear setback is nineteen point five feet. So it's just a bit short of that required twenty-five feet. So those are the three, what I think are fairly minor variances that are being requested to facilitate this project. And they really all, as I said, do stem from the fact that the existing building and its related infrastructure can't really meet the required rear yard setback for a mixed-use building, nor can it provide all of the usable open space on the property without, while still accommodating the onsite parking and circulation. So all of the parking requirements are met onsite, both vehicular and bicycle. And so we do think that it is an efficient use of this property. And these site constraints really are inherent anytime you have an adaptive reuse project, where the existing building was constructed as a commercial building that fully complied with all area and bulk provisions. So in order to make this case for our requested relief, we are looking at the C variance criteria, the public benefits tests in particular. As I'm sure you all know, you've seen many variances come for you. The criteria of this public benefits test are that you need to show that the granting of the variance will advance the intents and purposes of the MLUL and that the benefits of granting that variance substantially outweigh any potential detriments. And also that those benefits are truly public benefits, not just accruing to the property owner. There is also the negative criteria aspect of the C variance relief, where we must demonstrate that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and that it will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the master plan and zoning ordinance. So we did look at the, obviously, the MLUL goals, as well as Princeton's own planning documents to confirm that this application does meet all of those goals and objectives. So in terms of the MLUL goals, I think the ones that are most relevant, that are very clearly consistently met, relate to the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. We think that this project is certainly consistent with advancing all of those goals and does not in any way impair them. There is also a goal, Goal E, in the MLUL that speaks to appropriate population densities and concentrations. And we believe that this is very much an appropriate level of density and residential use. Purpose or goal G of the MLUL speaks to providing a variety of different land uses, including residential, as well as, you know, in the context of other uses such as commercial, open space, et cetera, in order to meet the needs of citizens. We think that this actually very much is consistent with this MLUL goal. We are introducing, you know, limited housing opportunities into an existing context where it's very appropriate and we're making maximum use of that space for residential use. And then the last MLUL goal that I think is most relevant is Goal I, which speaks to promoting a desirable visual environment. We are not creating any new developed, newly developed buildings. We are very much knitting in to the existing, the existing context here, using an existing building that has existed for some time and has been, I think, everybody would probably see it as fairly appropriate in terms of scale, architecture, et cetera. So those are the MLUL goals. We also did review your two thousand and twenty-three master plan. Ian spoke to a few of these goals already. But I was just struck by how much of that plan is really talking about exactly what we're proposing, you know, introducing housing opportunities, thinking about introducing them in areas of the municipality that make the most sense. So in and around the downtown and those periphery areas, in areas that are in close proximity to services and open space and other- in areas that are in close proximity to services and, and open space and other amenities. So the two thousand twenty-three plan, the land use element speaks to enhancing the existing patterns of land use, but again, focusing that residential density within and around the downtown. We clearly are, are consistent with that. Removing barriers to increased residential density. Ian spoke to that earlier as well. I, I guess you could argue that, that the variances required might be considered potential barriers. So we are asking for relief from those to facilitate this infill residential development. On the mobility side, you already heard from, from Ian earlier about the goal about reducing inbound commuting through creating more walkable housing opportunities. There is also a goal about encouraging non-vehicular transportation, and, and that really is part and parcel with a walkable environment as well, and also the bicycle infrastructure that we are providing. The natural resource element talks about coordinating and preserving development to accommodate population growth while preserving and enhancing natural resources. As an adaptive reuse project, this is really efficient development. It's not creating any, any new development on green space. It's using an existing building that is part of an already built environment. A second goal here under natural resource conservation is guiding growth away from natural resources and into areas with existing or planned infrastructure. This area is obviously already developed and has all of the infrastructure in place to support this residential development. And then the last part of the master plan, economic development. There's a goal that speaks to increasing the percentage of workers who can live in Princeton by expanding the range of housing and non-motorized transportation options. This is certainly inconsistent with that goal in terms of both the housing opportunities and the access to, to non-vehicular transportation. We also looked at your two thousand twenty housing element, which, this is all very, very similar. I don't want to be redundant, but it does speak to smart growth principles, mix of land uses, range of housing opportunities, walkable neighborhoods, attractive communities, focusing growth in existing parts of the community, and then providing a variety of transportation choices. So we do feel very much that this application is consistent with all of Princeton's existing planning goals and objectives. It's consistent with the MLUL goals and that the variance relief is justified by the benefits of providing that, the new housing opportunities that are within walking distance to downtown Princeton and doing that in a way that doesn't in any way alter the built scale, while activating this building that has sat vacant for several years, or a portion of it has sat vacant for several years. Another benefit, there's a couple of other benefits of the project. It will reduce the amount of impervious coverage slightly, but it's still a reduction. And similarly, it will result in a slightly less traffic generation, as you heard, compared with an all office use. So all of these benefits clearly further the public good. They're consistent with the MLUL and your established planning goals. This development will, will leverage a prime infill development site and an opportunity to create new housing that's walkable, that's part of smart growth mentality, that preserves that community scale and provides a different type of housing as well. You heard early on about, there, these are not dedicated affordable units. I'll let the applicant speak to, to the request, which I think is very amenable to about future potential affordable housing triggers, but these will be market rate. That being said, they are going to be, you know, somewhat smaller units. The nature of them going into an existing building rather than new construction, just the configuration of these units means that they will be relatively more affordable than many of the other market rate units that, that you're seeing in Princeton, particularly the newly constructed ones. So it really does provide a different price point, I think, and a different type of housing that, that is needed in Princeton. And it's really part of your, your ongoing housing goals and objectives. So we, we feel that the variance relief is very much justified, that the benefits far outweigh any detriments, that there are public good benefits and that this application approval can be granted without substantial detriment to any public good. And it would not impair any intent or purpose of either the master plan or the zoning ordinance. That being said, I will happily entertain questions.
Thank you very much, Susan. That was great. Madam Chair, we have, Daniel and Susan are available to the board and the public for questions.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Tar. Paula Venuka.
Thank you for the presentations. So I just have a, I just lost this screen, sorry about that. Just one observation and then a, a request for clarifications. Just looking at the floor plan, the second floor plan, it looks like apartment four has just one very small window.
Can we put that up on the screen? Can we go back to, thanks? Yeah.
So apartment four is the one that's abutting the elevator and the stairwell. So it will be the least desirable apartment in that respect as well, and it also has one very small window. I don't, I just wanted to point that out as something you may want to consider. The other question for clarification relates to the parking situation. I'm trying to understand the parking flow and how that works with the covered parking area. So I don't know if you could go back a couple of slides to the site plan, just to explain that and how many parking spaces are covered and how many are outside the covered area.
Yeah, sure. So there's one handicap stall with striping that's fully covered. And then there is one full space that's covered. The rest are kind of partially covered, as you can see in this photo here. So this is normally how they park. They're partially covered. For all intensive purposes, there are exterior spaces. You can kind of see here in the corner, there's one car parked here. That currently belongs to Merrill Lynch and it's going to stay that way. There's a handicap, handicap spot next to it. And the rest, for all intensive purposes, are exterior partially covered. So if I answered that question.
So are there four or six partially covered spaces there? Because I, I think the staff notes mentioned something like fifteen, and I'm just wondering how you count that up.
Yeah, there's sixteen total. One was, one is being proposed to be removed to better meet the open space requirement. But current, currently there's one, two, three, four, five, basically five that are partially covered. And then one fully covered and one handicap stall that's fully covered.
Okay. Okay. And then there's a dumpster in one of them, so that's not really usable either, right?
No, the, the dumpster is back here.
Okay.
Is, and it's not actually considered a, a parking space in our calculations.
Okay. All right. So that adds up to fifteen, even with the, so even adding, removing that parking space to create open space, you would still have fifteen spaces left over?
Correct, yeah, correct. And we would still meet the parking requirement for this mixed use application for the one and a half spaces per apartment and then what the ordinance requires per square foot of office space.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula B. Jack Taylor, and then Claudia Wilson Anderson. Jack?
Yeah, first and foremost, I'm impressed with the development itself. My question concerns staff's suggestion that there be a conditionality, namely for affordable housing. I would appreciate understanding in greater detail. What is the background, the rationale? How does that work, number one? And number two, is that a role which the planning board in fact can play? And number three, what is the reference to the lawyer and our lawyer Jerry had an opinion? Should this conditionality come into play?
Yeah, I, I think.
So I don't mean to put words in the professionals' mouths, and maybe I should let Jerry answer this, but it, it is, we're not requiring affordable housing. We're noting that the four units is just shy of what would trigger an affordable housing requirement. And if there's further development, residential development on this site, if they convert the third floor to apartments, then these four will be counted toward that obligation. Do I have that right, Jerry?
That's exactly right. What, what we want to avoid, and we've done this at least one time in the past, is we said, if you, if you're not at a point where the number of units requires an affordable housing set aside, you, you can add to that subsequently, so that you, so, so that you would have a requirement. And so if there's a subsequent addition, there, there'll be a requirement and there'll be affordable housing set aside. And the whole idea in part is, we don't want to, it's not the case here, but we don't want a situation in where somebody, a developer's coming in, subdividing a property, saying, here's four units, and then a year later, they're coming in with four units, another subdivided property, you know, an adjacent subdivided property, when it should, it should be treated as one unitary development. And Dan and Derek, what, what, what was that case in which we did that? Do you remember?
Uh, that was two seventeen Witherspoon Street. It was four townhouses that were constructed towards the rear of the property.
Okay.
And just to further clarify, Mr. Mueller, if you don't mind me jumping in here.
Oh, no, absolutely.
The ordinance envisions what, what the, the goal of this agreement would be. It does state that no subdivision shall be permitted or approved for the purpose of avoiding compliance with this requirement. A developer may not, for example, subdivide a property into two lots and then place each of them to produce a number of units just below the threshold. So the ordinance does contemplate it. However, I think there's an area that we just want to make sure we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is by also including the fact that it's a site plan, right? This is not a subdivision application. It would likely be that, that further conversion of space in this would not result in a subdivision application. But the intent is that the project may not be divided up to avoid compliance with the affordable housing requirement.
And just for the record, the applicant agrees to do all that. For Mr. Taylor's sake, you might be aware that when you build only four units, you must pay an affordable housing fee to the municipality, which will be done here.
Yeah, thanks for adding that, Chris. That's important. Yeah. Thanks for that question, Jack. Claudia?
Yes, thank you. And I, I echo Jack's comment that I do think this is an excellent creative reuse of the, of the property. I do have some questions, and I'm hoping you can clarify two things relating to ingress and egress as it relates to fire, egress from the second floor and a handicap ingress egress.
So the third floor offices have their own stairwell for a fire egress, which exits from the third floor. It takes you all the way down to the side property line and out to the parking lot. And the first floor has, excuse me, the second floor apartments have their own stairwell, which also has a dedicated stairwell that takes you out through the front of the building. So originally, the building was designed to have two means of egress, which is why it really works here to have the apartment so that each unit, each use space can have its own stairwell. Plus, in addition to that, the lobby and the elevator.
Is there any requirement for a second independent mean of egress from the second floor?
No, only for ten apartments or more, is my understanding. But obviously, we'd have to comply with all building code regulations as we go down that road.
You had mentioned something about the elevator also being available. Is that something for handicap? That's a possibility?
Yes, it's a possibility.
In other words, Joe Daniel, explain the use of the red arrow going to the left there in the, in the, toward the elevator.
There's currently, once you access this apartment entrance, you can take the stairwell up, but there also is a door here which takes you into the lobby, which then you could take the elevator to the second floor.
I understand. Thank you. The, the third question I have, I think, is just regarding the fence for the adjacent property to the north. I assume that that fence is owned by you.
You know what? I'm really not sure, but I'm happy to repair it. It's something that, is this the fence you're talking about here?
Yes. I assume since the attractive side was facing the other way, the fence was owned by you and it would just be a request to repair it.
Yeah, not a problem. I'm happy to do so.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Daniel, could I ask, could I ask a question? You would indicate that there wouldn't be any plantings in this usable open space back there that's on the screen now. That will be grass, I take it?
Yeah, so the plan is to relocate this curb to this striped parking stall so that this is all open space. And actually, my anticipation was to take out these, I mean, these bloom in the spring right now. It's winter. But my anticipation was to take these out to make this really more usable space, but leave the rest of the mature landscaping that has, really creates a nice buffer around the neighboring properties.
Okay. Would there be any amenities that you expect to place there, like tables or anything like that?
No, I, I wasn't planning on it and, you know, and Susan has kind of testified to all the amenities around the area, the parks and shopping center and grocery stores. It's just an area where, you know, you could take your dog out or it wasn't my plan at the moment, no.
Okay. So it's, when it's usable, it just means the type of thing you just described? And I take it somebody could come out with a blanket and lie on it or something like that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Let me ask you this also. If, if you converted the space to the right of the one you're converting to open space, now you'd have a parking shortage and you would need relief for that. But as a practical matter, do you need that space?
I would prefer to keep it, to be, to be frank. Yeah. You know, it's, it's possible that the studio, for example, may not need a parking space, but I would like to have one so that I don't have to find offsite parking. And I, and, and frankly, the, I think the trade-off, considering the location, to have a parking space and be able to accommodate that, considering the parks and other amenities that are around, probably is a better use of the space.
Okay, thank you.
Following up on one of Mr. Mueller's questions, I, I really do think that having a bench or two would be a very good idea in, in both of the open space areas that you have identified, just so that people could, you know, step outside and sit down. I don't even know that, especially if those are native shrubs. I don't know that you would need to remove those, although I'm not, you know, going to die in a ditch over that or whatever. But I, I feel like it's much more usable if, if there's a, a place to sit. You know, not, you know, not picnic tables, not anything that, you know, takes up the entire site, because your point is taken about, you know, being able to take dogs out there and whatnot. But, and the, the space in the front of the building, that's the, the usable open space that's immediately adjacent to North Harrison Street, is it not? Doesn't one part of that border North Harrison? Am I?
Yeah, this runs along North Harrison and then adjacent to the property that runs along Nassau. And Chris, is that Graves Building?
King.
Behind there?
King, King's Building.
King's Building, excuse me. Yeah, so that's this area here. If the board feels, yeah, if, yeah, if the board feels that that would be the best use of space, we're, as the applicant, we're certainly amenable to putting a bench or adding some kind of sitting area for the resident. So we're, we're certainly open to it if you guys feel that's the best way to utilize that space.
You know, well, my, my opinion is it, it would be in that, one of the staff reports suggests that, you know, this, come back to the landscape committee for, for a final look, which I would support too. But can we see the, the overview of the plan that shows in green the two open space areas? There we go. So the border that is right next to the sidewalk So the border that is right next to the sidewalk along the west side of North Harrison, are there trees there right now? Or is that just basically exposed to the sidewalk? My, my point is, I know from driving over there a fair amount that traffic backs up a good bit on Harrison, you know, leading up to the, the signal at Nassau Street. And it would be really good to have a barrier either with shrubs or a fence, not necessarily a six-foot-tall fence, but, but some fence that gives some, you know, clear sense of separation between that open space and, and the sidewalk and, and street, both for, you know, just a little bit of a shield and privacy and also, you know, might be good if you have any concern at all about people living, you know, who knows where, and having their dogs use that property as opposed to the people who live there accessing it, if you get my drift. So I don't know, can you speak a little bit to that?
But we might, if we've looked at this one, let's go back to the, the photograph with the vegetation. One more. Here we go. So those are mature trees on the property.
Yeah.
So partially screens this area. And I take your point, there could be some more landscaping, but a bit more in front of the building.
But is there any between the sidewalk? This doesn't look to me as any between the sidewalk and this area we're talking.
As you move toward Nassau Street, I believe that those trees are between that, the portion of the open space and the sidewalk.
Okay.
In other words, Harrison Street is running down the, the white side of the, of this slide.
Uh huh.
I see.
Okay, well, I mean, you get the point I'm making, that it would be good to, you know, I'm not suggesting that the, all these open space areas should be enclosed. I, I totally agree with you that that is not practical and probably maybe very well not the best way to make them usable and accessible to, to the folks who will live there. But I do think that if there is, and based on a, a street view of the property that I saw earlier today, it looked to me like a chunk of this was very exposed to the street where cars, like I said, routinely are just backed up and sitting there idling and, you know, including the New Jersey Transit bus and whatnot. And I just think it would be more pleasant for everyone if there were a separation between that usable open space area with a couple of benches and, and the sidewalk and street. I also had a, a question if we can go back to the other open space area picture, one slide away. Yeah. So the dumpsters on the left there, is that where, I assume where garbage goes? From the?
Yeah, there's a trash and recycling containers there.
So once you have residences there, that garbage is going to be, you know, kitchen waste, among other things, and, and potentially pet waste. And I'm just wondering whether you might relocate that to a place that's not immediately adjacent to what you want your usable open space to be for people who might, you know, want to sit there for a while in the summer and not smell the smells? Just a thought. And I, I don't have a different place on the property that I would suggest. You know, the, you, you know it better than I do, but, you know, maybe a different corner that's a?
I, I think that the reason it was designed here in the first place is it's actually a, it's not like they're not individual cans. It's in a, like a big container that they pick up with the forks. And the location where it is now, it's straight back from the driveway. So the trash company backs in, picks it up and drives out. And I think the site is tight enough for a big garbage truck. If it was in a different location, to be able to put the forks on and lift it up would be, that would be the, create a practical issue for actually removing it. And actually, it's, it's the most efficient way, like, it takes up the least amount of space, but holds the most amount of garbage and recycling is with those kinds of bigger bins that they pick up with the forks.
Yeah, I take your point. I just think you might be needing to think down the road about making sure that, you know, with the additional residential waste, you're not putting, you know, something that generates odors immediately adjacent to your public open space. Ms. Nuka?
Thanks. I just had a question about the parking spaces on the other side of the site that are on the other side of the building. There's two which border the parking area of the next-door property. I think what you said was the King, next to the King Building. Would it, I don't know if you've considered the possibility of converting those spaces to open space? That might, that space might actually be more usable for residents as it's a little bit more secluded away from the trash bins at the parking.
Yeah, I, you know, when we were first designing the site, we came up with the parking requirements for the mixed use for the existing office and the proposed residential. We were able to lose one space without creating another parking variance. So we felt that where we proposed it was the most appropriate place to combine it and make it work. If I was to convert the other, additional space, it would trigger a parking variance requirement, which we were trying to avoid.
So it would obviate the need for the open space variance, but it would create a parking variance? So you trade off one variance for another?
Yeah.
Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, yes, correct. We would be complying with open space variance while creating a parking variance. And as, as Susan, our planner, testified, we think because of the location of this property to multiple parks and downtown grocery stores, that the need for open space is not as impactful as maybe some other parts of town. And, and on top of that, we're pretty darn close to getting to where we need to be as the ordinance requires.
Okay. Understood. And, and I, I may have sort of said this at the outset. I, I agree with other board members that have, you know, expressed appreciation for a project that is an adaptive reuse, that is gentle infill, that is walkable to so many desirable destinations and to those nearby parks. And, you know, those, those issues are, are compelling. I have one other question about the, the open space on the other side of the property next to Harrison Street. Would you consider, in addition to putting a couple of benches there, I believe that there is plenty of room for an additional shade tree that might be a nice amenity for the, for the property and for the residents? And I wonder whether you, what you think about that?
Yeah, absolutely. I think it would be, it would be nice to the streetscape and it would be nice to more enclose this open space. And I think that's a good suggestion and we're happy to do that.
Thank you. Are there other questions from board members before we invite members of the public to pose questions? Okay, seeing none. If, for those of you who are in the attendees room, and there are eight people here attending and observing, if any of you have comments that you want to make or questions that you want to pose about this application, now is the time to virtually raise your hand and address the board. I am not seeing any hands go up. So I'll just say once again, the, the link for virtually raising your hand is at the bottom of your screen. There should be a raise hand icon if you're watching by Zoom or if you're on the phone, you press star nine. Okay, seeing no hands going up, I will close the public comment portion of, or close public comment on this application and invite final comments and suggested conditions from board members and staff. We have talked about a condition to bring a landscape plan to, or don't create a separate, you know, fully engineered, specific landscape plan, but come to the plan, come to the landscape Subcommittee of the Planning Board and show where benches would be placed and where you think a shade tree might be best positioned. I'm sure that our municipal arborist would be happy to consult on that, on that question, both as to location and to species. And I really appreciate your willingness to do that. Another condition that has been suggested, I think, well, it has to do with the acknowledgement, which Mr. Tar said the applicant is willing to, to make, that about the affordable housing requirement and these counting toward a future requirement if additional residents are added to this building. What am I missing?
Let's see. The applicant, applicant indicated that they would repair the fence where it's in disarray. That might be it. Let me, I don't think I saw anything else.
Can you take a look at the, at the, Mr. Bridger, has your hand up?
Yes, Madam Chair. Just the little blurb about the booster pump if necessary.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yep.
If, if the board doesn't object, considering the landscaping here is very minimal, I would much rather prefer if Taylor and Dan can sign off on a shade tree and benches as opposed to going to a landscape Subcommittee where, you know, the landscaping here is really limited. I mean, it's existing. You know, we're talking about adding a tree, which I'm happy to do, and some benches. As applicant, I would prefer if Dan and Taylor or a combination could sign off on the locations and the species of that without going to the landscape Subcommittee.
Now, when you say Dan, are you referring to Dan Topper-Millsky or Dan Weisman?
Dan Weisman, I mean, yeah.
So I think Dan Topper-Millsky would be the, would be the?
The better, yeah.
The?
That's fine. So, yeah, fine. That, that, that's absolutely fine with me, yeah.
Okay, and Mr. Barsky, what are your, as, as far as the point that I made, prob, I'm sure repeatedly, and sorry if I was repetitive, but about the, a barrier between this open space that we're looking at here and the, and Harrison Street, either in the form of a fence or shrubbery? Is that something you're also?
I, I am. Personally, I think like a little section of fence would be odd here. But I'm, I'm certainly happy, I think shrubbery would better enclose this area in a more like kind of authentic, natural way. And I'm certainly happy to, with Dan Weisman and with Taylor or the combination of both, to figure out what that looks like. It's only a stretch of like 10 or 15 feet. So it's not a, it's not a whole lot of landscaping. Plus, there's going to be a shade tree there. So that's going to fill in some of the area. And, and then to coordinate with them, you know, benches and, again, the area is, it's not very big and there's, there's not a whole lot of planning or a whole lot you could do there with it. So if I could do that with them, I would most certainly prefer to. And, but yeah, the, the answer is yes. I'm, I'm happy to put some shrubbery in and to kind of more, make that area more private along Harrison Street.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So I have a question, I guess, for, for Jerry Muller and for staff if they want to pipe up. And that, that is, does Mr. Barsky's request to work with Dan Topper-Millsky, who, who, as you know, Mr. Barsky is our consulting landscape architect, and with Taylor Sapudar, rather than come, you know, to a scheduled meeting of the landscape Subcommittee, does that, does that create more work for staff? Or, or is that, or not? I mean, what I want to be sensitive to is not placing a burden on staff that the, that the Subcommittee, you know, could handle and, am I, am I being clear?
Madam Chair, Steph, Steph has no objection. We're happy to work with the applicant. I think you've provided very clear guidance as to what the board would like to see here. And I'd be happy to work with the parties identified here tonight, help incorporate those into the site.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Dan Weisman. I, I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Okay. So with those conditions that have been articulated, would Mr. Weisman, again?
Sorry, just the standard, standard boilerplate comments at the end of the report regarding inspection fees and other potential outside agency approvals, if those could also be made conditions.
Good, yes. Would any member of the board like to make a motion at this, at this time? Mr. McGowan?
Actually, I have, I guess I have a question. The variant, the variances, do they have to be included?
Yes, the motion, if it were a motion to approve, would be to approve this minor site plan with the variances identified, setback variance and de minimis open space variance.
And, and in fact, the open space is not enclosed?
Right, correct, yeah.
Well, with that, then I, with those, I'd move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Ms. Philip, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Nuka?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
We thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Thank you. Thanks for an interesting application. Well done.
Thank you.
Thanks. Take care.
Okay. So in?